Well, I'm standing and we'll call the meeting to order. And we have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Shaver? Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Good?
Yes, here.
Mr. Sowers? Mr. Seaver?
Here.
And Mr. Staub?
Here.
Okay, do we have any items to add or delete from the agenda? If not, then we'll follow the agenda that has been distributed to us. We have the minutes from our regular meeting on July the 12th. We've had those to look at for a few days. Any additions or corrections to this set of minutes? Okay, motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Oh, there's a favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we do have a period for general citizen comments. And we have Jennifer Smith that signed up.
Jennifer Smith, 129 Vickers Ferry Road. Clearly, we know the events of last night, with the town not approving the special use permit. I wanted to circle back because I know that a lot of questions were asked by you guys answered. And in order to go through this, we're going to go through the process again for circle back and have to go back through you guys. So I wanted to give an update to you guys of the things that you had brought up. In requesting with the fence, we purchased the panels that are on site, they're being thrown this weekend. Cameras were purchased, some already installed, some are on site currently being installed. There was a lock put on the back door that allows staff to get in and out while remaining, keeping the doors locked throughout the day to increase that security. And then we had talked about how if we use that road, we'd be responsible for maintaining it. We already re-ground that second half of the road where there was that chance for the water to pool and things like that. We ended up re-grounding today by G and L Tree Care Solutions. We also have a contract with Law &amp; Order who has agreed to maintain it for weather-related purposes. And then G and L Tree Care Solutions as well is going to maintain any of the trees and shrubbery that may grow in or reduce visibility. They were out there today looking at it, seeing what they could do to help increase the visibility for pulling out there. And then the town main concerns were things I thought we had kind of already addressed with the unapproved road as well as staff parking. There was a confusion with Bradley's, we had gotten a verbal agreement for one percent of Bradley's and another had said no. But that being aside, we do have a written agreement with New Direction, which is 528 feet away. A point one mile is a three-minute walk away from us. And we're in the process of getting not only just the written agreement, but a written lease in place for that as well. I reached out to him already about getting the lease in place. And I just wanted to know from you guys' perspective if there were other concerns that we could address before we start the process again to request that special use permit.
Where is the parking with the agreement?
The parking is at New Direction Church, which is on the other side of that cemetery, so just that one block up.
Oh, up on Cave Street?
Mm-hmm, 528th Street.
Okay.
And we have that in writing, I've sent the email permission to Steve already. But I'm going to get the lease in place as well for that. And that will fit all of our staff and that's them.
I don't know of anything else at this time until it comes back to us.
Do I appreciate you guys' time?
But anyone else, any other?
I, when you bring it back, I wasn't here last time, I apologize, but I watched the meetings today to prepare, so I know what I'm doing. When you, when you do bring it back, I think it would be helpful for everybody if you could really nail down and be very clear about the number of staff and the hours.
Do you want me to have like the number of staff that would be there at each like increment?
I, I think that might be helpful. I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know scheduling of daycare. But I, I think if it was a little bit more, a little bit more clearly laid out, that might be helpful to people considering. My understanding is a lot of, there was a lot of concern about traffic flow. And just to refresh my memory, students are being, children are being dropped off in the rear of the building. Staff, staff will enter through the rear of the building as well?
Everyone enters through the rear.
And so, transportation to and from the school?
So the only thing that's in the front is the school bus because that's the route they're already taking. They already have so many stops along Main Street that it makes sense to just keep it that way for school purposes. But all of the transportation will be.
So, just my memory from my prior life with the school board. You might also, before you come back, reach out to Transportation, to Diana Breeden, and make sure that you know the routing that they're going to use. I think it's important that you show that the children are going to be dropped off going west, so they don't have to cross the road. I, at some point with St. Mark's, I believe there was an issue, the, the school division had the routing, the bus go the other way, and the school board had a lot of concerns about that, and so it was changed, so just check on that.
And I'll follow up with them too, because I've been in communication with them, that we were kind of waiting for this to flow before we leave. So I'll just give them as much information as I can and get as much information as I can.
And then also just, because I wasn't here last time too, I'm not very familiar with the Department of Ed requirements for daycare. I know just a little bit enough to be dangerous. And I know that you have a list as long as all of our arms of what you have to submit to them to, to get approved, to get licensed. At one point in one of the meetings I watched, I thought I understood that you had to have a certificate of occupancy before you could get licensed. And then I thought I heard that you said that you had to have a special use permit before you could submit to get licensed.
So from, and that was, that was information that came to me as it unrolled. So I submitted the certificate of occupancy and there was a miscommunication from the Department of Education where they didn't under, they didn't know that we had to do a special use permit.
Okay.
So once I submitted that, then they said, oh, you need a special use permit, well, we have to wait for that.
Okay.
So everything else was already submitted, and they were just waiting on a special use permit to be approved, to come out and do their inspection. Everything else had already been submitted. We now have to resubmit everything because it was denied, so we have to restart both processes. But we, I'll let me get started back up on that.
Okay.
And I may, I know last night it was suggested possibly doing some sort of conditional approval because the state needs a special use permit. It seems like the town would prefer state to come and approve before they offer this special use permit. So I think when we come back, I'm going to try to request both a joint planning commission and town council meeting as well as that conditional so that we can have all the information, have it all there, and be able to afford that capacity.
Steve, what is, what is, what are, what are the requirements for parking? It's one space per employee?
Correct.
On site?
Well, at, at the planning commission meeting, we also, we asked about that, and you said that it was, or it would qualify if it was in a certain proximity?
Twelve hundred feet, yes.
Twelve hundred feet, that, that's what I was, I was wondering about. And it was at the planning commission meeting too, it was mentioned, they kept using the term southern states, but it was Farm Bureau that, that there would be parking there. Did, did that, and they were going to go in front of their board with that?
And we were going to have them, use them as parking, because Bradley's had given the okay verbal with St. Mark's, they've always had a verbal agreement with them, never had anything written. So St. Mark's was like, okay, we checked that box, we have the verbal agreement. And then Farm Bureau had said that they were going to vote on being able to use their spot when there were funerals. And then the town council meeting happened and everything kind of unraveled later. So we're going to come up with a new proposal to present to the Farm Bureau and they'll vote again next month. So we want to make sure they have all the updated information.
So the one, so the one space per employee, Steve, or twelve hundred feet proximity, is the number of employees that are there at a time, not the total that will be there at any time, correct? How is that, how is that interpreted?
I will need to confirm that. It's a little, I, I need to confirm that.
Okay.
It just states, it states employees, I, I'll need to confirm.
Well, it's, it's gray because what you're doing is, is different than, than what St. Mark's did. And, you know, my kids went there, though, so that's what I'm, that's my basis of understanding of this whole process.
I know in the ordinance, it does talk about between the hours of eight and four, it's required to have the one space per employee for childcare and venture there. But either way, New Direction has, is within that twelve hundred feet and has more than, even if we had all three staff at the same time, we have one.
So I, because I was going to suggest, if, if you needed to when you come back, if you couldn't meet the requirements that are in the code, if you, if you could scale back what you're going to do to meet those requirements. And I don't know how that works with your business model in terms of revenue, but.
And there, I can look at the numbers to even see if we can scale back and then potentially increase.
So that you could fit your, your operation within what is available, so that we could satisfy the code?
And all these requests, you know, increase there, I'm, I'm happy to look at the numbers there.
Just, just trying to cover all the bases.
Would it be helpful if I had like multiple?
Scenarios?
Is that helpful?
That's a lot of work, that's a lot of work.
I'm not going to do the work, this is important, so if I have the work ahead of time, we can help facilitate the process, I'm happy to do it.
I mean, that's not really, that's not really up to me, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just shooting, I'm just shooting ideas off the top of my head, I, I, it just, I would like to see us try to work toward a resolution of, of the issue that the council had, so that we can make it work for everybody. I, I mean, we got to follow the rules. But if we can alter what you're trying to do to fit within the rules, I mean, that would be great for everybody.
I feel like I'm trying to figure out the, kind of the difference between what St. Mark's was doing versus what we were doing and having not that much. And I know that they had it, you know, split day and they had.
Well, and they only had, I mean, I, did your kids go there? So I only remember two staff members. And, and they, it was split, so there was a morning, the four-year-olds went at one time and the three-year-olds went at a different, you know, in the afternoon, that was morning afternoons. There were a few kids that were there all day, but I don't think it was a lot. I think primarily it was, it was preschool and it was half-day. Because I remember I sent Shannon for, when she was four, but Kara I sent when she was three and four. That's a whole other story. But I, I only remember the two staff members. Now, they, they could have had a volunteer that was in the classroom that I didn't see, but I think it was just the two of them. And what I wanted to remind you is of this. I think with the parking, it wasn't an issue because the one staff member lived in the house next to the church. And I think Lynette parked in her driveway because they were best friends, so I don't think there was any parking. There would, there was no parking issue. Because they were parking on private property in their driveway and walking, you know, to the next door.
Somebody had, and I am not going to be able to give names because I don't recall exactly, but somebody commented said there were five staff. But then the fifty-five occupancy, they weren't sure how it was split throughout the day. I think it was just a half and half.
I heard the fifty-five, and I think that was a long time after my kids were there.
It was an after-school program, so it's probably closed. Because I remember walking in there, when I first walked through on it, and there was still like the jacket on the chair and like the.
Right. Right. Well, my kids were there in the mid-nineties, so I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure it grew, I mean, it grew.
Okay, anything else on this at this time?
I appreciate you guys.
Okay, we do have three public hearings that have been advertised. The first one, we are requested to conduct a public hearing to consider a request for a special use permit to install a manufactured home on parcel tax map number forty-two A eleven eighteen eighty-eight eighty-five. This is on Fourth Street at a, an address to be determined. The property is zoned R four, high density. It is permitted in the town code under section four oh four point two E. And the applicant is seeking to replace a manufactured home that was destroyed some years ago. Oh, okay. Okay, all right, strike that. Reading from the script. Okay, in the town code section, we have the requirements that are there. It is eight hundred square feet or more, it must be eight hundred square feet or more. Built on a permanent chassis designed to be used as a single-family dwelling with a permanent foundation. And of course, it has to have the utilities, including plumbing, heating, and electrical. The special use permit must be reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the town council. The axles, wheels, tow bar hitch must be removed. Roof must be of shingles or other roofing materials that are normally used. The underpinning shall consist of a permanent continuous masonry foundation. Siding has to be conventional siding. The front rear and all other steps and landings must be in accordance with the building legal requirements. And we have to meet all the other town zoning requirements. Okay, we do have the application. Location marked out. Tax map information. And the notice of application for advertisement for a public hearing. Okay, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Davis says, signed up to speak.
Thank you. I'm James Davis, and I live at four oh six Lou Ray Avenue. And the reason that I was, I got notification of this proposal. And this property puts up to my backyard and they connect at the back. And I've lived at this address in the same house for thirty-five years, and there's been nothing there, nothing. And I was just concerned and was wondering, with this house on this small lot, how far back into, I guess you could say my backyard connected, would this house be? Is it just going to be towards the front of the property, front of the lot? Or is it going to extend way back? I was saying, in my backyard. So I was just concerned about what it was going to do when I'm in my backyard, is it going to be a house right there? You know, burged, it's going to be up. So that was my question. The size of the house and where would it be located? There again, we were talking about a manufactured home, I wondered, was it a trailer going to be in? But you said something about wheels being removed and this and that, so I guess it is a trailer.
Manufactured home.
Possibly a trailer, but all that would be moved. I was just concerned, after nothing being there for thirty-five years since I've been there, what's it going to be like now? And I know that we're trying to envision what it's going to be, we don't know, but I just wondered, my big question is, how far back is this thing going to be?
Um, they have to meet the backyard requirements, which are twenty-five feet. It'd have to be twenty-five feet on, on their property. And five, five feet on the sat yards.
Okay. And I was, I guess everybody's got maps and everything and knows what's going on with that. I was just very concerned about it, after nothing being there, how's it going to be now?
I understand. Out where I live, there's a big field in behind. And we've been there thirty years this November. It's always been just a big empty field. But it may not be, may not be one of these days.
Right. But I was just expressing my concern and appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. Yes. Okay, anyone else to speak on this public hearing? Okay, I'll officially close it then. Any questions or discussion?
So just for regarding Mr. Davis's question, there's a, I don't know, these pages aren't numbered, but Steve, there's a, a map in here with, it looks like maybe the trailer drawn into that lot. It says front door. Right, that one, right up at the top, the upper, is that, that skinny rectangular thing, is that the trailer? Is that where he's anticipating the trailer being, or is it just somebody's random doodling?
I don't know that it's to scale. I think what the applicant was trying to indicate was that it would be more of a linear home. It does have to meet the setbacks of, of the twenty-five feet and five feet. So I, the, I, I don't think that the scale of that drawing is, is quite accurate. The, the width of the yard is, I believe, seventy-five feet. And just using, and just looking at it, that looks like it's a ten-foot wide rectangle. So I, I'm not sure if it is to scale or not. And they have not submitted a zoning permit because they were waiting for the consideration of special use permit. And then once that, if it was approved, then they would be submitting the zoning permit.
So their, their driveway would enter from Fourth Street?
That is correct.
Driveways are expensive, so I would think they would situate it as close to the front of Fourth Street that they could because that's, that's, that's a big expense. I mean, I, off the top of my head, I was, I saw the same thing Tracy, and I was wondering if they drew it there because they were trying to avoid the, the print in the middle of the rectangle.
Okay, other questions or discussions?
Have you talked, Eddie, have you talked to the applicants by chance? I don't know, you know, sometimes they, yeah, sometimes they're out milling around, so I didn't know.
No, I just know it's a very small lot, that's why I got this notification. And I said, someone's going to put a house here?
It shows it being seven thousand square feet.
What? Oh, the lot. I was like, oh, man.
Eddie, do you?
I had to worry about the beach.
Do you know how close your, your, the back of your house is to your property line?
I've had a little, I've had a little ways.
I mean, is, is it more than twenty-five feet? Is it more than the setback, or is it right on the setback?
No, it's a lot more than that.
Okay. Okay.
So you'd have your backyard plus the twenty-five feet?
Right.
If they go to the minimum?
Right, that's what I was thinking.
And plus, years ago, I got, I know that, I was talking to Brian the other day, years ago, at those alleyways back there, that I got the resurf, I resurfaced it. They said we got part of the alleyway and everything, so that's on the latest survey. So it's a little bit more of a buffer for me. But the back part, I was just wondering how far in it would be in the back. That was my concern. But then he was telling me about the setbacks and everything, so. It's long, they got to have a long trailer, so I was just trying to envision, so like, tell me where it's going to start. Off of Fourth Street, or how far back into view of my house it would be? That was my question.
Okay, other questions or discussion? Okay, are we ready to move on this?
Sure, I'll move the planning commission, recommend the approval of, to the town council of the special use permit to install a manufactured home conforming to the town code on the tax map number specified in the R four high district, high density Boomfield Residential District for Mary Duncan as presented.
A second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
And Mr. Rob? Yes.
Okay, our second item for public hearing is at fifty-eight West Main Street. We are requested to consider the installation of a sign. on the south face of fifty-eight West Main. The sign would extend into the right-of-way over West Main Street, West Main Street sidewalk. Section eight oh two point four does provide a special exception that can be given by the town council through a special use permit. Other signs that have been considered in this regard have been required to have a liability insurance policy in excess of a million dollar coverage with the town identified as an additional insured. The sign shall be maintained in good condition and shall be removed when appearance deteriorates. The sign posts and anchorings shall be inspected annually by a qualified structural professional engineer. Okay, we have the application. Tax map information there. And I believe in the application, it says that this would be similar to one that was previously approved for the Shenandoah Moon business. I will open the public hearing and Mr. Rockey, Jim.
Good evening. As you noted, that the, the town already approved a sign that was previously there. And I'm, I'm Tim Rockey and I live at one fifty-sixth Route in Ryanville. Uh, we own, my wife and I own the building. Now, so, and the sign was already approved. Not this particular sign, but one for Shenandoah Moon, similar size, similar place. So, uh, any time a small business wants to move into Main Street, I think the town should, uh, embrace it and do whatever it can to make sure it succeeds. And having a sign on that doorway and sidewalk, we can see it. There is a business there coming up and down both the street to be advantageous.
Thank you.
What business will this be? Oh, that's, I'm sorry. What's the sign gonna, what's the sign gonna say?
You're taking the thunder away. So, I'm John Sensich. And I live at four oh two Forest Road in Ray. I, I'm tenant and, I'm already a different tenant in fifty-eight West Main Street. And where the sign would go would be directly on the side of the wall where, where my office is. But, and so I have absolutely no objection to this. And, uh, but in full transparency, what's down below is my wife's business. And she told me if I had an objection, don't come home. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions, but obviously no, no objection. The, uh, the insurance is already in place.
Allowing for this adjustment. Um, and I would recommend not just for existing structures, but for people to be allowed to construct additional now. Um, promote the fact that there are so many families who are looking for housing, who in an ideal world, we have more multifamily housing. Um, in a lot of small towns I've lived in, if that's been what it is, people utilize uh, the network of having family or close friends living on the same property, helping each other out, sharing the bills. Um, and I think that with the amount of families that are in need of housing right now, um, as um, older apartments are having to be renovated and their prices go up and families are trueded out, we just have a lot of need for more creative options for families um, that allow for more affordable and more community options. Um, so I would recommend obviously that there be amendment approved. But I would also recommend that if you consider, um, that you can have a new, obviously with the right amount of square footage on the property, allowing for the parking, all that, but allowing a new one to be built, um, as well as permitting it for not just, I know that right there talks about like two individuals, but allowing for a family, um, and, um, and be able to just kind of create some more of those creative options for, for families who are looking to stay in the town, looking to keep their kids in school, still working in the community, who just need something different for housing.
Anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing then. And I know we've, we've had this consideration for the last couple of months. Um, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the requirement for it to be there before December thirty-one of twenty twenty-two, that's only in R one. In, in the other zoning districts, you can build a new structure. Um, I can, I still kind of have some concerns about this. Um, because I think we're changing the fundamental R one, especially R one and R two, but the other districts too. We're changing the fundamental purpose of residential zoning, and that is one house on one lot. And, and again, I know in R one, it has to be a building that's already there, that it's already a garage, it's already a storage building, uh, and it cannot be added on to, if I'm thinking correctly, it cannot be expanded. Uh, it's got to be that building that's there, and then it would be renovated with all the facilities so that someone could live there. And then in the other districts, you could build another house, another dwelling unit, if you meet all the setbacks and, uh, have the water and sewer and electrical and parking and all that, um, which I understand the need for housing. At least in my mind, I think we're changing the residential zoning districts. Uh, and I realize this might be a small number of special use permits that would come through on this. Uh, and we do have the requirements in there that the owner has to live in either the main house or the accessory, uh, and cannot be used as short-term rental. Uh, those are there. But again, I just think it's a step we should really, really consider because we are changing what we've always known as residential zoning districts. And again, I know it's a small, probably a small number, um, but it is, it's still making a change.
So the the changes specify that it, it can't be more than nine hundred square feet or fifty percent of the primary dwelling, whichever is the lower number. Um.
It's gonna be a small unit.
It is. In some of the other jurisdictions that we looked at on your chart, um, some of those square footages were significantly smaller than nine hundred. Do we, I, I came late to this party, so where did the nine hundred, how was that number decided on?
I believe the nine hundred was based upon the typical home square footage being eighteen hundred.
Gotcha.
And that's where if your home is only fifteen hundred square feet, then the maximum would be seventy.
Seven fifteen, right.
The intent was to try and limit the accessory dwelling size to less than half of what the primary dwelling would be.
And the conversation about this, um, came about because of the shortage.
Correct.
And this is a way to increase inventory.
The town council, uh, referred to the planning commission with the intent of, uh, exploring how the town without increasing the number of lots could allow for
More housing.
More housing, or, uh, that, I know that, uh, I think that the primary intent was for, uh, multi-generational families being able to allow parents to stay on site, but then their children take over the home, um, allow, and that would be, uh, renting one of the other structures. But I, I, I think that the primary driver, driving thought was allowing a multi-generational family to stay on property.
But that wouldn't have to be.
It doesn't have to, no, that's why I'm saying that there could be a, a, a renter on, on either one of those, but that, that was one of the, the, the reasons to require that the property owner reside in one or the other structure so that it was, the intent is not that I come in and buy a property and then I put two renters on a property that shouldn't have been, historically only would have one renter.
Right.
The intent is that it's, it's to allow for the property owner to downsize if they wish, or to allow either their family or another family to then make use of the property if it meets their requirements of, of, you know.
And so if somebody, if, if this is adopted and somebody wanted to construct a new accessory dwelling structure on their property in R two or three or four, um, what are there different setbacks between the primary structure and the accessory in each one of those districts? And they're different in each one of those?
They are different, yes. They, 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 they drop to, uh, between five and one feet. But you can, right now, you can build a garage.
Okay, so here's my, here's where I'm thinking. If I owned a house in R two, let's just say, I mean, I'm not even really sure where that is, I'm looking at my map, it's pink, um, but if I owned a lot in a house in R two and I wanted to construct an accessory dwelling structure for my adult child, um, and the setback to my house was two feet, you can be assured that I would be very confident about the person I was putting in that structure. So, I mean, I don't, I don't think people are gonna just rent these things willy-nilly to just anybody. Like, if it's that close to your house that you live in, you're gonna be pretty picky about who you're putting in there. I mean, you follow me?
It's gonna be right at your back door.
Right. So, I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, for me, it would be my relative or like a childhood friend, I mean, it's gonna be somebody that I've known forever.
You can pass the milk through the window.
And have, and have some control over.
And that is the hope, is that any issues that a neighbor in property would encounter would also be, um, lived with by the property owner themselves. So you are correct, but, but the intent is that you're not going to rent it to someone that's going to have loud music, is going to have parties at all.
Right, so my neighbor would, could, really, probably would not expect to have any more issues with the person living in my accessory dwelling structure than they have with me.
Should not, yes, because you are still on the property.
Right.
To deal with the same issues that your neighbor would be.
Exactly. A- and actually, in actuality, I'd be dealing with it more because they're gonna be closer to me than they are to my neighbor, right?
Uh, yes.
Because of the setbacks.
And I see we do have a, a catch-all there in, uh, that are hell, that we can put on additional regulations when the special use permit would come in, depending on the lot and the neighbors and whatever. Um, we, we can require additional regulations as recommended by the planning commission and required by the town council. It's kind of a catch-all.
And, and again, if it's an oddly shaped lot, or if there's, there's some other concern that would arise from either the notification of the adjacent property owners, or just something that we haven't conceived of while we're trying to establish the code, it gives the, the planning commission and council the flexibility to, to try and address any issues that were unforeseen and, and do arise with any particular application.
I think it's a, I think it's a really good way to try to address our, our issue with housing and to increase the inventory without more lots, I mean, to use what we have.
And, as a, um, can't even think of it anymore. There's a number of other localities that are, that are adopting similar code amendments for their same reason.
Do you know of any that adopted it a while ago that have had to change it or update it because they ran into issues?
Um, and I wish I had brought the chart in. Um, most all of those, uh, localities, I believe, have adopted, um, and to my knowledge, none have had to make amendments beyond what the original code amendment was. And this is, uh, right now, the town does allow this, but it's in only one zoning district and it's four buildings that existed prior to two thousand and eight. So all we're, all that council wanted to do was to try and expand where these types of structures could be considered.
And, and a, a lot of it, a lot of potential places, Ronnie, might be constricted because of the requirement of the, um, off-street parking space, like a, a lot of smaller lots are not gonna have, by the time you get a house and an accessory dwelling structure, you're not gonna have room for a ten-by-twenty-foot parking area, and so that would take care of having them on s- you know, smaller, smaller lots. I like that we have the flexibility to, to change it.
Other questions or discussion? Okay, it's been advertised and come before us, so if we're ready, we can have a motion.
I would move that the planning commission recommend approval of town council with the code amendment to town code appendix A, zoning, article five, supplemental regulations, chapter five sixteen, accessory dwelling units, and to code sections four oh one, two C, four oh two, two F, four oh three, two K, four oh four, two P, and four oh six, two Q as presented.
Second all of that.
All the numbers and letters.
All right, we're ready for the roll call then? Mr. Severs?
Yes.
Ms. Samba?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes, reluctantly.
No, that. Yes, reluctantly.
I, I, no, I shouldn't say that, I should've said weekly.
Direct notice.
Direct.
Okay, those are the public hearings that we had. We do have one item there for update or discussion. Uh, this concerns the short-term rentals. Um, I believe we looked at this before, we've got a list of the short-term rentals by type and a breakdown of where they are in each zoning district. And this to the properties is on the back page. I would note there that the majority of the short-term rentals are in bus- the business district. Is there discussion or consideration?
Again, town council simply wanted to give the planning commission the opportunity if there was any thought to, uh, either restrict or, or otherwise change the zoning district around for short-term rentals. And, uh, Councilman, um, White, thank you. Councilman White had appeared at the, the previous meeting, expressed his concerns.
Has, um, has the code for short-term rentals been updated since the adoption of the comprehensive plan in two thousand nineteen? Do you know the last time it was updated or changed? Uh, the reason I'm asking is because in looking at the comprehensive plan, the short-term rentals, lodging houses are mentioned, and it says that the town will seek input from the public regarding the appropriate districts for short-term rentals. And I was just wondering if, if and when that process occurred.
Well, all I can say is that we do have a public hearing anytime. There is a short-term rental request, and that's, would be the equivalent of seeking the, the public's input as to
That specific one, mm-hmm.
Now, if, if, if the commission desires, we can hold a public, um, hearing just to get input, there's, it doesn't have to be any action on it, but if the commission desired to, to give public input on the appropriateness of, of any, uh, district that is within the purview of the commission.
Well, I, I think if we're gonna entertain the possibility, if we're gonna consider any change in where we allow them, I think we should have public input somehow, maybe a couple of different ways.
Agree with that.
I mean, I, I don't, I'm not enough of an expert on short-term rentals and what's happening in the town to be able to know what I think is appropriate place or, or what the issues are, what concerns people have about why it should be here and why it shouldn't be there. I mean, I, I would like to hear from people.
I think it might be a good idea to invite people that have short-term rentals to discuss their either concerns or challenges, or what makes it work, or what's, what's happening better or worse than it did, say, three years ago.
Right.
And see, you know, because of course, some people are gonna say, well, I've got a short-term rental, so I don't want any more short-term rentals.
Right.
That's obviously common sense when, with somebody that has it, but, so that's not what we'd be looking for, but I think they'll look to see if there's any valid, um, arguments or concerns or, um, just, or recommendations from people that are currently involved in this.
And I agree, and maybe even why they chose to have their short-term rental in the place that they chose to have it there.
Yeah.
Well, if it, um, we can, but anyone that has a business license, we can send out a, an inquiry letter to them and invite them to talk with the planning commission if they want. Not necessarily a, a, a public hearing, we just invite them to, to attend the meeting and offering input that they might have, or put it in writing.
Yeah, I think that's probably pretty good as a, as a step one into exploring, because that's kind of what we talked about last month, is that, you know, it's, it's drawing attention because we've had more this year than what we've had the last five years total. In the scheme of things, forty-nine, um, units in the whole lot. But what we said was that, you know, we'd continue to monitor it, and, and I think that's a, that would be a great first step.
We can note this is the first month that we haven't had a public hearing on short-term rental for a while.
Oh, yeah, wow, yeah.
And we could also, you know, get information from some of our experts in the travel industry regarding what the current trends are as far as, you know, more hotel stays versus, you know, or, or people staying one night versus four nights, and, because most people aren't staying one night in Airbnb, obviously, because it doesn't make sense with the, um, cleaning costs and that sort of thing.
Right.
But, you know, is that, is that a tr- is that a trend that's happening too, that's maybe, if, I'm insinuating that maybe there's more availability than it was in the past, is it because of the increase in the number of units, or is it because, um, the public's changing the way they're doing things, or is it a combination of both, or, um,
And I, I think, I think Realtors would be helpful in that
Yeah.
conversation too, because they're the ones that are being contacted by people that are outside Luray that want to have short-term rentals here. I mean, they're selling them, and they know what they're hearing.
I think, like if Tracy, it'd be a good first step, because I think what, I mean, what I personally am hearing in the community, and you hear things on Facebook and grumbling and whatnot, is, oh, there's no place for anybody to rent because there's every, because there's a thousand short-term rentals, which there isn't, but the perception, because you approve one a month for the last four months, is that the whole town is a short-term rental,
Mm-hmm.
which is clearly not, but, you know, if we get the, um, recommendations and perception from different people, then you can have an educated conversation with someone saying, actually, we had this meeting and we talked to these people and this is what we found, you know? As opposed to waiting until it escalates further, so.
Right. And if it's gonna keep growing
Yeah.
and we decide that we want that growth, then I think that, that it would be appropriate and prudent for us to decide where we want that growth and, and plan for it, rather than wait until it gets away from us.
Yep.
I'll send a, a letter, I'll deal probably next week.
Okay.
Let y'all, if, if there's anything you might add to it, please, let me know. If you have any suggestions for, uh, local Realtors that you might want to send to, just let me know as well.
Sure.
Okay, other discussion on that? Other discussion or questions or on anything from the commission? Did you have something to bring for us?
I'm the recent owner of Flotsies, and I just wanted to attend the town, this meeting to learn the process of what all goes on in, in the town and everything, so.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
You had a big, you had a big line over the, yeah, last.
Did you bring any samples?
They'd be melted by now, Tracy.
In the freezer, in the lobby.
I did have a question, though. Since you ask, I will ask this.
Sure.
Is there any discussion anywhere between the town, the quarter superiors, or whoever, on any type of really good fast food restaurants coming to this county?
Well, the county has an economic development that they work on. Unfortunately, as much as people say they would like to have this, that, or the other, it is very hard for any locality to go after restaurants because restaurants already employ staff who are analyzing the market of any given locality to determine what the viability for their, uh, food product would be. So, uh, as much as you would want this restaurant, that restaurant, this grocery store, that grocery store, this hardware store, that hardware store, um, it is very difficult to say, yes, we're gonna send letters to Jack in the Box or whomever to, uh, to, to, to come, you know, for a time Chick-fil-A brought their, their trailer down here.
Right.
And as much as I would love to tell you that we're getting a Chick-fil-A, until their numbers for what they perceive as what they could sell will happen, uh, it, it's just wishing until we, we, we get to some level of, of either population and, and visitation that they feel that they can open their restaurant in six years.
Because from what I see, and I know, I know you won't prove everywhere, but I see the growth always gonna be going west that way. Or it's that now from Omega, Drawer, Walmart, and everything going that way. And I just see that area that I write, prime location for a really, like you says, mainly like Chick-fil-A or something, something very good, you know, something not dreasy old bar bit, you know, bars and stuff all the time, and some of the things that have a problem, but something really good, and I just could never understand. Even the year, well, the caverns doesn't want that, I don't see how that's possible because the caverns is full of customers that have to eat, you know? And I just see that as mild.
The candy's small.
Ice cream place, a gold mine somewhere, somewhere along the line, even if the numbers don't appear to be correct, I disagree with the numbers.
Well, the, the, the other thing to, that, uh, we have a number of new restaurants that have opened up in Luray and appear to be, uh, doing very well. So, uh, and we've got a number of wonderful restaurants that have been here for a number of years and continue to thrive. So I would agree with you that there is definitely the market, uh, but I'm, I'm happy that the restaurants that we do have appear to be doing very well.
It's always something, and that's, that's the individual has to have the financial capability to pull it off. But it's always something about a hometown person doing something versus a Northern Virginia person doing something.
Can I ask a clarifying question? If the, you were just talking about the EDA, is that the difference between like town limits and county limits? So if it's in the town, it's this, but it's a county, or is EDA covered?
And they cover everything, all town residents or Page County residents.
So they would deal with, like, they would be the ones doing, they would
The, they're, so the, the EDA's charge is to try and draw in economic development county lines.
And we'll say, Mr. Good was my teacher at one time.
Uh-oh.
And he says, uh-oh, wow.
You're gonna have to remind me.
Well, that's been a long time, but for me too, but I can't remember again. Was it high school, did you teach in Big County High School?
Stanley Elementary.
Yeah, Stanley, so that really goes back early. Not for you, I mean, you didn't age. Yeah, he was my teacher.
We've heard that before from your section, so.
But I'd be happy, uh, I find it very interesting, I will continue, come to the meetings, and who knows, you know, what the future holds.
There you go.
And, and any success?
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or anything else? Okay, I think our next meeting is on September thirteen, if I if we tore off the right calendar and looked at the right page here, Tracy.
Yeah, you're, well, now it's right. Yeah, you're, well, now it's right. If you looked at, see these, we still have July, I bet.
September thirteenth, oh. Steve, anything else to bring us up to date on?
Uh, well, just if you're interested this, uh, Friday, you got another one of the, um, evening, I mean, concert tonight at Rutner, it'll be at Road Duck. And then September fifth, I believe, uh, can't remember the date from here, but first Saturday in September is the, uh, art festival, I think, Park.
Next week, the start of football. First games.
Anything the town council would ever like to do with us, we would be, we'll be telling each other.
Free ice cream?
Tracy already asked that.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we have completed our agenda, so we will be adjourned.